I've got a call here, so let's move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, you all had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. It is, as you'd expect it to be, the financial side of the consent agenda. We show about one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, I believe, is what it came out to as we closed the books out this month. The tax revenue has begun to just trickle in a little bit, but typically about May eighth or the ninth is when we will, when we will see that, so we will certainly have a much better feel next month whenever we come in, but all in all, we feel good. There have been a few new expenses that have come up because of the virus, but then in the end, a couple of other cases, there have been some savings also, and so those have kind of been washed for us. I don't see those being a concern at this point. But if you had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda, and I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Our board, we have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? If not, may I adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion, may I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second on the favor of the governor's speech, the vice president's saying aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We have a hold harmless resolution in your packet. This is something that has been recommended that districts pass. As you know, under the guidance of the governor, we are, we are keeping everybody on full time, even though some people aren't working full time, some people are far from full time. But we have a lot of people working from home, of course, our teachers are working very hard every day with their lessons, but there, that does create some problems with timesheets when the auditors come in next year, so it was recommended that we pass a hold harmless, and that was, that was provided to you, that basically says that you are aware that due to the, due to COVID nineteen outbreak, that we will continue to pay even though some of those people don't necessarily work the full allotment of hours that they normally work. This is what all districts in Northwest Arkansas are signing, and this really won't be a factor until next year when the auditor comes around, and we want to make sure we have everything in place for them. Anybody have any questions about what the hold harmless is or does?
So my recommendation, so basically it'll just kind of from the start date, when we had to go through all this, to basically the end of the school year now.
Yes.
Kind of a window of timeframe that anybody ever comes back and says, hey, this is a threshold of time.
It helps to create some, there's some discrepancy in timesheets, you know, it's, you know, we are, we are paying people that cannot sign the timesheet that necessarily says they worked forty hours a week. So this is the way of making sure that you all are aware that we are operating with it. I would recommend then that we approve the hold harmless resolution as presented.
We have a recommendation to approve the hold harmless resolution. Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, may I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, every year, we have to approve our statement of assurances for special ed for the federal government to receive federal money. We have to operate, which of course we would and will at all times operate within federal guidelines for, for special ed and IDEA. This is a document that we sign every year, and it's just saying that you all are aware that to receive these monies, we will, we will have to operate within those guidelines, and, and we, we certainly will, so. If anybody has any questions, I would recommend then that we approve the statement of resolution. Or the state, statement of assurance, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a recommendation to approve the statement of assurance for special education. Any other comments or requests? Not may I adjourn a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, may I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. That passes.
Okay, I will need to get that signed by you, Mr. Warren, before you leave tonight, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
I, I provided the email to you that Dr. Coby sent me. We've had some problems with the roof over at the Co-op, just so, so everybody knows on the, on the same page. The Co-op is our building. We do lease it to the Co-op, and, and we offer the Co-op a, a competitive rate to have it. Of course, for our district, it's advantageous because when we have trainings, we don't have to pay mileage for people to travel to Springdale or Bentonville or anywhere else, so there's some advantages, certainly advantages, to having that Co-op on our campus. That round building is our building and is just leased, and we have had water problems, roof problems in that building before. We have, we have worked on that, and with some of the changes over in our, our maintenance department, we had a, a stewardman roofing come in and look at it, and they, they have not given us anything yet, but I did realize the timing of my situation and how that works, and, and so I just wanted to, to get that information out to you, that I'm going to investigate that as, as we move forward, and then in May, you all can come back and make whatever decision you, you want to make and deemed appropriate to make on that. The one thing I will tell you from meeting with the stewardments is, is it's very much like a roof on your house. They, they can patch it and get us two or three years for X amount of dollars. They can, they can step up what they do for more money, and, and ultimately, we can go all the way out to the fact of trying to put a new roof on it where we won't have to worry about the roof for twenty-five years. But we certainly do have a building that, that tonight, as we were preparing for the meeting, will leak as, as it rained tonight, and certainly, certainly look, look at what our options are as we move forward this month, and then I'll bring you that information next month as I, as I gather more of it. Fair enough? Okay. Elisa Jones, you all have had an opportunity to meet Elisa Jones. Elisa Jones used to work for the Department of Facilities. She now works with us as a, as a facilities representative. She forms our master plan, works, works with me to form the master plan. She really does the paperwork end of it. Elisa plays a role in the fact that, that since she used to work at the, the department, she understands how the game works at the department. If you all that have been here on the board for a few years, remember a few years ago, we had a, we had a problem with a grant that we had sent in, and, and she said we didn't, and after we looked at it, we didn't, and she knew the rules very well and got that fixed, and as I recall, it was on this building. And so we were, we were able to move forward, and her, her assistance in that matter was certainly worth much more than, than, than what we pay her. She, she's been a great asset for us, and, and she has set up the master plan for both the expansion of the junior high and for the expansion at Folsom that could happen the year after that, and so I, my plan would be to keep her, she's five thousand dollars to keep her per year, keep her for another year, and then at that point, you know, you all and, and Mr. LaFune would look at that and see if that's the way you want to continue or not, but, but she certainly is invested in getting us off the ground with the junior high. There's a lot of money on the table, and, and having her expertise, I think, is, is a great asset for us. I entertain any questions you have about her, what she does, or anything, but we've used her for five years now, I believe it is.
Just to ask a quick guess about how much you think she saved us so far?
How much? Well, I'm, I'm, she, she, she opened the door on this building when we were, when we were in a position where, so, so I don't know, I don't know the amount of money she has saved us per se, it's the fact that if we would have had the same issue with them, we had nobody at the district that has the expertise with the Department of Facilities to go down and meet with them face to face and tell them, this is where you messed up. And, and so, you know, what she really probably saved us was whatever an attorney would have cost, and whatever it would have cost timeline to back up our high school projects, if you remember. Yeah, I think, yeah, she, we, 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 you know, we got moved into high school like August first, you know, so, so we couldn't have backed up much more, so. So my recommendation is that we would, we would keep Ms., Ms. Jones for another year under this contract.
All right, board, we have a recommendation to keep Eliza, Eliza Jones for June of four twenty-two, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Any other questions or comments? If not, may I adjourn a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, may I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second, all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Okay, I, I, I say this every year, I don't know that there's a good way to do it. The policy changes came out to you, we, we have worked on those for a few days, and, and there's just, that's a hard thing to do, to get them out and get them, to go through them and to get them out to you all in a timely fashion. I know that was a lot of things to look at. I, I want to, I want to tell you, just to go back, you know, since we have a new, we, we use the Arkansas School Board Association model policies. They, they have their attorneys that work those out. We get those policies, and we have an opportunity to go through those policies before we bring them to you all, but we have a timeframe that we need to get them approved by you all before then our contracts go out. So, so all of that tends to come in all at about the same time. We tend not to tweak the model policies much, if any. We are paying experts, we are paying attorneys to draw those up. Mr. Pedderton, myself, Mr. Stroh, Mr. Purefoy, people that look at that, we're certainly not attorneys, and we don't know the, you know, so these policies that came in, in, in virtually every case, and many of the policy changes are no more than change a legal reference, or correct a misspelled word, or, or something along those lines, but we did not modify any of the policies away from how they were recommended. We was, we were, we, many years ago, ten years ago, more than that, we did modify, or a mo, policy or two was modified, and just the changing of a word or two then made the policy read different than how it was intended to. So we are, we are very hesitant about changing a single letter in, in the policies, and so I think that gives you a little assurance that they are, are well vetted by the attorneys, and that they are in compliance with, with Arkansas code, and, and, you know, I would, I would tend to get more worried on your end if we had tweaked them a lot and written a lot of our own language in them, but as, as they come to you tonight, they are as presented to us. We find them, we find them to, you know, if we can work with them, they certainly, in most cases, we have no choice, they're the law's plan, and we have to work with them. There was one that we picked up too late. Stephanie, when you talked real quick, can say, actually, I haven't a chance to look at that?
About eight point three seven.
It's classified policy for social networking ethics, basically what this adds to, there are some definition, definitions defining what social media accounts are, things like that. It basically covers, it adds those teaching under a waiver are responsible for the same type of ethics as any other teacher would be. I think previously, someone teaching on a waiver, that word had been left out, so they look back and adding that specific word. Basically what that means, too.
Anybody have any questions about the policies that came out to you all? Any concerns, anything you'd like to? Then I would recommend that we approve the policies as presented.
All right, board, we have a recommendation to approve the changes to the school policies as presented. Any other questions or comments? If not, may I adjourn a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, may I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Okay, on, on construction update, we kind of talked about this a few minutes ago, so I'll go back over it real quick. Asbestos removal is going to begin tomorrow in the old gym. Most of that, as I recall, is, is related to the glue that's in the floor tile. They have gone in, they have taken everything out now that is bolted or attached to the floor in any way, and, and piled all that up in the middle of the gym, that, on that rubber floor, and now they will come in and they will remove all those tiles. That will take about a week. The building will be sealed up, and there will be, and I can't, a, a negative air chamber in it, so the air that's inside will be recirculated, the air will not come out, I guess is the way it is. They told me that, that it would be safe for people to walk by, although we put the fence around part of it, and we will, we won't have people at the school in that area tomorrow or really over the next week, so it, it certainly ought to be well secured. That will take about a week. Then after that, sometime, this time next week, they will begin the teardown of that facility, and I think the teardown will go fairly quick, and I think the haul off, because of the sheer number of material there is there, will take a while, but that is moving forward, that is now actually a little bit ahead of schedule, so, you know, we feel, we feel good about that, getting that out of the way. That is certainly the first step in, in the addition on the junior high and the building on the, of the junior high. Do you have something? Do you want to add? Okay. All right. That, that building has, has certainly served its time, hasn't it?
Been a long time.
Been a long time, yes, and I can remember my, I think my first year here in ninety-nine, and that roof on that building was condemned, and they said, you can use it ten more years, and we've got a lot more to do.
Think about those windows at the top of that, and the bleachers used to go up all the way, the windows.
Those top windows?
Those top windows, sure did. Think about how it's, it's mountain goat steeping now.
I tell you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'd have to have a rope to get up.
There's a lot of history in that building, and, and, you know, in that regard, it's a bit sad, you know, and the other regard is, you know, it's exciting to move forward and get a, get a great facility for those kids as they come through, and so, so we will, we will look forward to getting that down and look forward to, you know, the rebuild phase, which is, which is certainly coming right around the corner.
That rubber floor, and it's forty-one years old.
Now, they got their money out of it, didn't they?
Yeah.
Any questions about construction? Other than that, everything's wait and hold, just like, just like it always is. We'll wait to hear on, on the junior high, we probably won't hear, you know, until, until somewhere around February on it, something along those lines. The, during the special session, they will appropriate funding, but they won't designate it out to which facilities yet, so it, it will, it will be a while, but hopefully, you know, we'll have everything in place and ready to go, so when we do get the approval, we'll be ready to move forward with that. Any questions or thoughts on, on construction? Okay? I have, I've asked Mr. Purefoy to come, and he, he and Clayton, I know, have worked very hard on, you know, the, the, the virus has been a, certainly a, an amazing time, it just changed our world in so many ways, and, and changed what we do here every day, it's changed what we're doing here tonight, but certainly, the one thing it's changed that, that has as much passion as just about anything is graduation, and Mr. Purefoy and Clayton have, have worked on this and talked about this for quite a while, and, and we just thought it'd be good to come to the meeting and just keep you all informed as to some of the things that have taken place and where we're at.
It may take me a little bit, but I'll just kind of go through it. I know that you all know most of this, but not all of this. The governor said, they announced that graduation cannot be held before July one, which that's what kind of we felt. To be honest, we, in the beginning, that's why we have not set a date. We kind of felt like it's going to take a lot longer. We didn't want to, we didn't want to be the first ones out there because we, we knew it was going to take a lot longer. We don't want to be the last ones, I understand that, but we still got to think about all of the things that could possibly happen. The target date is July one, obviously. Prior to that, we can, we can send in, ways that we can do it virtually or anything like that, which I'll have some of those to show, if, if that's what you all might want to do. When you do that, the restrictions obviously are ten or less, which we are aware of that. As Johnny Key said, he asked that schools be patient as we go through this. Some of the things that might come up, and I'm just going to give these to you, parents who are separated, or live in different states, or, or grandparents or family members, they're, they're probably going to take off once we set a date. They're probably going to sit, they're probably going to try to buy some plane tickets. That's just going to happen. They're going to take vacation days when we set this date, and if it doesn't come truition on this date, then we can put the word possible right there, possibility of having graduation on this date. They're not going to look at the word possible, so just keep that in mind if we do set a date tonight, and I'll be glad to do whatever. We decided about having, having the graduates come back to one of the football games. We've thought about this, having them come back, present them on the football field, and have graduation the next morning, if that's possible. Those were one of the things that we thought about. We visited about having graduation around Christmas. We all know that they probably wouldn't want to do that, but I do know the numbers are still going up. We're not going to be able to do anything until the numbers start going down, and, and it's got to go way down for us to be able to do it. We, we can host a virtual, virtual graduation, give each student four tickets, line them up at the bus turnaround, start them down here, and they'll have theirselves, and the reason I said four is because we have some that are divorced that have been remarried, and so that way it gives the husband and the new wife, and the, the wife and the new husband, be able to be with their kids as they walk through here. We can line them up ten feet apart, keep them separated with chairs, they move up when the next group moves up, they can hear the vows sound, present, and the class president, because we'll have it on the speakers, we'll have it on the cameras, so everybody will be able to see something, and have them all lined up to be able to walk across that stage, and then walk out those doors without getting any closer than ten feet from each other. We can do something like that. We could have a drive-by graduation, which means that they'll line up in the parking lot out here. They drive by, they get out, they come up on the stage out front, accept their diploma, get back in their car, drive back around and park. That way they can watch all of their folks out here in the parking lot receive their diploma, all that can fit in the car, obviously. We are going to announce, obviously, when we do do this graduation, we're going to, we didn't have awards night like we normally do, but we will announce that at graduation, which could make graduation take a little bit longer than normal, because we're going to announce each student's name, what they received, what scholarship, what awards. May fourth, like, well, I had all this, and I'm not going to worry about that because it's going to be after July one anyways. We're planning on sending out a survey to the students this week, see what their interests are, and kind of going from there. If you would ask kids right now, I can just tell you, they'd rather just say, give me the diploma, I don't care about graduation, but those are kids. We know that a lot of it is for the parents, so we do understand that, we're going to get some of those replies. The reasonable date that we thought of to set would be July the twenty-fourth. That would be the first reasonable date, that's if everything goes the way that we're hoping it to go, to be able to house everybody out, out there. Obviously, if we set that date, and the governor says no, we could still do a virtual, but it would be housed in here, so it would be quite a bit different. As of right now, we all know no one can stay in hotels. We could wait, we could wait if you wanted to, till the next board minute, meeting. We may have a month from now to decide that, we may have a clearer ideal of when we may be able to do it. So those are just thoughts that I'm throwing out there. The good thing about it is, is we've handed out the caps and gowns, which they were excited about that. If we had one hundred and, I'd say, fifty that had paid all their dues, I would say seventy-five percent in above come and picked up their cap and, get cap and gowns, I'm sure the other ones didn't work. Right now, we're putting together such a spring sports video, a video of our arts department, you know, and, and a video of our C, CT department, and a video of our seniors. We're going to try to put it on the Jumbotron where they can drive up and watch it in evening time, which will be two minutes and twenty seconds long to that top deal. Those are things we're going to try to do for them, and then the awards night ceremony, we're going to dress up, me and Mr. Williamson, read off the awards that the kids received, although that they're not going to get them, handed to them, at least that they'll have their name and announce, and they can go on there and look at it. So that being said, that gives you a lot of information of things that could possibly happen. We're still in an area of unknown, which is very unusual for someone in my position, because we can usually tell you and give you the answer, and I don't have an answer for this right now, and that's what's mind-boggling to me, because I don't know what I don't know. So, but normally, I could sit here and tell you, this is what we're going to do. I will tell you this, I went ahead and built, we're building the new stage, because I had planned on having a stage set up out there on the field, and I had a plan to have a stage set up here just in case for rain, you know, because when they come in for graduation, that's supposed to happen on May the twelfth. If it was raining out there, we'd be coming in here. We could still house everybody in here. It's not as comfortable, but we had a backup plan, so that is being done, but, you know, I've had, I've had a bunch of advice. Everybody's, everybody's got advice, I promise you, and they all, they all tell me.
Twenty-fourth, is that Saturday?
That's a Friday. The reason I set it on a Friday is because in case it does rain, and we do get to have the full graduation, we can move it to Saturday. And normally, we don't see a lot of rain in July, so that's what I was kind of hoping, but we can always wait until the end of May. You'll still have two months to make a decision on a date, and we may have more information at the end of May, so it's...
I think, I think that's great, John, I appreciate your, what you done, your plan you did on that. Are you planning, are you thinking a morning, morning graduation or evening?
It's got to be a morning because of the heat on the turf. They ain't going to be able to stand it, and I'm still going to allow them to wear shorts, it'll be a different, shorts and tennis shoes, it'll be a totally different dress outfit than, than normal, because it won't, because we don't want to burn them up.
So your ten and a day in July twenty-fourth, if, if everything goes fine, would that still, would that still limit the social distancing, or if that's all clear, would we still be able to?
If it's all clear, we'll all be able to go, but I would imagine with the shape that we're in right now, our country's in, it's still going to be social distancing, and we may have to revert to something different, but...
Limit the number of people to come per...
That's right. I may have to give out two tickets, where mom and dad show up, and we have X's on the seats, and this is where you have to sit. I, we don't know that, though, I don't have an answer.
But we could still broadcast that, and it'd be...
Yeah, it's all, we can all broadcast everything, and that's what we would do if, if we had the social distancing here. We could broadcast it, and you'd see it everywhere.
Lot of local schools jumping on like July second, I don't know, aren't they? So I think it's wise that we push off.
I don't know, I'd be personally...
Fayetteville, Fayetteville's July first or second?
Second.
Obviously, that's going to have to be backed up, and, and Prairie Grove is August first. Other than that, other than that, I'm going to say this, and it, you know, but this is what I believe to be true from our meeting last Wednesday, is that every, every school that was on our teleconference the other day has picked a date, except Springdale, and Springdale is electing to go with a, with a non-traditional, I don't even remember, so I don't want to say, but it is a non-traditional, show up, get your picture taken, we hang your diploma, and you and mom, you know, y'all leave the next year it comes up. But the, the real deal, I think, is, is the most important thing to start with is, do you want to try to have a face-to-face graduation in July if it's possible? Or, or would you rather just proceed on with, I don't know what you call it?
A virtual, it's a virtual.
A virtual, a virtual graduation and move on. I, I, I did notice, and I, I can't say this to graduation, you might have seen it, I caught the tail end of it, Ozark apparently had some kind of virtual something, I saw the other day. I know that there was one school that had scheduled a face-to-face graduation before July one, and, and I think that, that is kind of triggered the governor to, to say, hold on, you know? I think, I think the real deal is, do you think, do you think as representatives of the community, that, that the community wants to have a face-to-face graduation, normal graduation, if possible in July, or do you think that they don't?
I think they'll, just, you know, it's a limited number of people, I don't think it's had, that's not a representative number by any stretch, but one thing I've heard is, it came getting back to something, that is a community normalcy.
The, the one thing about setting a date, as John proposed, the, the twenty-fourth, the one thing about setting a date like that is, it, it's, it's not like we're canceling, it's with the governor canceling, and so if it does create hardships for, for, for people, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but we, you know, we're sitting here with ten people in the room, six feet apart, because that's what the governor's told us we have to do, and we'll have to do what he says in that case also, but I know, I know that some, a couple of the schools are, are talking about having face-to-face graduation if they have to go to December. I would think that we would all like to get it done in July if it's good, and what, we've still at least got the kids here before they go off to college, and wherever they go to work, or wherever, or the military, or whatever. and wherever they go to work or wherever, or the military or whatever, we've still got a chance to get them in July. And if, 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 if it does, you know, some, you, you watch the governor, you take the prison numbers out for a few days, it gets better, and then for a couple of days, two weeks backup, and then a few days it gets so, I don't, I don't know how we know.
Yeah, personally, John, I think it's, I think it's a tough decision. I think you've done a great job. But me personally, I think you stick to July twenty-fourth and strongly emphasize tentative. Depending on, you know, stay ready. Because I think if you go past that, you're just gonna lose the number of people that you can recognize properly.
No, I don't wanna throw a hook in, let me, I just, we have, we have any graduated seniors that we know are going into the military?
I, you know, there is some. I don't know how many and I don't know when their start date is.
I think they normally go pretty quick, Jeff, and then you have to go.
There'll be some that, you know, may leave for boot camp in June, I, I don't know.
Could make it.
If we could, if we had four or five, if we could maybe get them through, you know, with their parents or whatever, but.
Does anybody know if that's changed?
Where we catch, huh?
Does anybody know if that's changed with military statistics?
I'm sorry?
Does anybody know if that, their start dates have changed?
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe that's just one of the couple of questions you throw in your survey, John. When, when you leave for school or vacation thing I have planned out?
I think that's, I think, I think that's a great idea. I personally would rather, I'd like to see a face-to-face graduation, you know. I think for some people, that's their, that's it. I mean, you know, it's their last big deal.
It's a big deal for us as a school.
You know, for some of us, it was a great achievement to graduate.
Sure, sure.
I, I prefer face-to-face myself, and I think most families would, and I'm, I'm like, Mr. Purefoy, I don't know if some of the kids would, would vote that way.
John, your kids are the, they, they were one of the, the moms that went to die. Few that I've talked to have all been pretty well, when, when, when y'all don't schedule, I can't do anything, those states said something. And uh, I, I appreciate all the work y'all done already, you thought a lot of questions back, I appreciate that. Do we need a Sunday tonight?
I don't, I don't know that we couldn't, that we couldn't, that we couldn't wait until uh, May may official. I think the fact that we get a little coverage in the newspaper and get it out to the parents, if we had a discussion about it, this July twenty-fourth looks like a tentative date that we'll look at, that we will, we will monitor the numbers as we move forward for another month and, and uh, as we come back on our May meeting, that, as John said, that would still give them eight weeks to, two, two months to, to make their plans, which will give plenty of time, but it, but it will let people know that we've had a discussion about it. We're, we're aware of the, you know, the, the concerns families have as, as far as wanting to, wanting to get some closure to the senior year. It's been a tough year for the seniors and, and uh, that would, you know.
How many are in graduation class?
Be about a hundred and eighty-seven, that's somewhere around that number.
So, we, we, we didn't necessarily have to take any action on that tonight. I just wanted, you know, John and I have been talking about it. We just thought it'd be best to share it with you all. Then what we will do is, we will just say tentatively, we're looking for the twenty-fourth, but we are going to wait until the May board meeting to make a final determination on that. Uh, we'll be tracking the numbers, uh, that are presented daily. And uh, you know, after May the fourth, I believe it is, we're gonna find out how the governor feels about phase one. And uh, we will be working through the, you know, this obviously, I can't remember if it's phase one or phase A, but, but whatever it is, having that many people get in would certainly be phase three or C or four or D, you know, anyway, you have a list, so uh, but I did notice, uh, the other day that he had listed churches possibly coming back in, in sometime at the end of May and, and certainly if churches, if you can come back with, with three or four hundred people in a church, you probably could put a certain amount of people outside into around the football stadium too, you know, so. But again, we'll go back to.
We may not have, you know, they may have a number, you know, at that point in time, you're seeing capacity of how much you can have. Maybe we can give that and then we'll know that you can invite six people, you know, instead of four, you can invite six. I just don't know the answer. I, I, yeah, 'cause we normally have the answer for you, you know, I mean, we don't, you know.
So, any other questions or thoughts on that? John, anything you wanna add to it?
I don't think so.
Okay, alright, thank you, John, for everything. Couple of, uh, on our, on our personnel, personnel this time of year changes daily, yeah, rapidly daily. This is as of today, based on the interviews that have taken place in the, in the various buildings and in the various departments. This is where we are except for, I do need to add one additional, a came in later, that is, uh, Lindsey Meek, secretary at the middle school. I'll give you. As a hire, yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, as a hire. Stephanie, we have two additional people that are, that are, um, coming into the central office. You wanna say anything about that you said in on the, on that interview?
For Julie Stewart, Perry Morrison's positions, we can be sixty, uh, for those. There are a couple of people around to fill those positions, um, I think Mr. Levin will be a very good fit for those jobs. Uh, Karen Ripford will come over, her account's payable. She has been food service secretary, so we're kinda shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit today, um, but hopefully she'll help us train someone to, to take that position. She does a great job. Uh, and then Kim Williamson will come over as our receptionist, she's currently at the middle school.
If there are no questions or concerns with that, I would recommend that we hire that slate of personnel that's presented tonight.
All right, board, we have a recommendation to accept the slate of personnel that's presented tonight. May I entertain a motion? So move, so move, may I entertain a second? I've got a motion to say, on the paper, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
On both same side, the motion passes. I guess we should, uh, set a meeting date?
Set a meeting date, May, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone can set a meeting date for next month? I believe our normal meeting date would, would it be on normal day?
It would.
Yeah? You want it?
Let's assume we're all going to the late on the twenty-third, to get it on the eighteenth.
That's right, alright. You're planning on having it on the eighteenth?
Yes, boss.
I'm for that.
What now?
I said your boss makes you work at it.
Yes, yeah.
The eighteenth working for you?
My, I do.
Eighteenth, alright, and let's just set our, Amy, the eighteenth working for you?
Yes.
Okay, okay, let's just set our date then for May eighteenth. We will see where we're at, uh, if we are, if we are back to where we can meet as a group, we could come back to the boardroom. If we do have to separate and socially distance, we'll probably come back here or somewhere like this since we're in place. We will, we will probably, uh, go ahead and meet in person, I think, that's the second time we've done this, y'all seem to be okay. We're, we're far enough away and I think we've done a good job of keeping ourselves apart, so, um. Okay, the only other, the only other item I'd like to add, I'd just like to let you all know that, uh, the Williams family, Don from Maryville, have, have, uh, donated some money to the district and, uh, about forty thousand dollars, and they asked, they said that they didn't wanna make a big deal out of that. And I don't wanna, I wanna honor their wishes, but I also want y'all to know that they did that. It's a, 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 a great gift, uh, we have, they have certainly, um, helped our district out before in other ways as, as some other people in the community have also, but uh, uh, that is, that is a wonderful thing. We are, we are looking at a couple of things we can do, uh, in the areas of, of technology and uh, maybe a couple of things related to, uh, some outdoor facilities and outdoor classroom type areas and that we can use that money for. And uh, I did just wanna tell you all about that, I wanna say thank you and, 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 or thank you to them and, and uh, as you, as you see them in passing, you know, see them in town, you know. I, I, I did want you all to know, a wonderful thing, good, good, good people, been great supporters of this school district. I can't think of anything else that we can add.
Mr. Warren? I, I, I just wanna say, really good talk about it with all this to happen, but you know, a couple of months ago, whatever it was, five, six weeks, whatever ago, it was when we hosted the state tournament in basketball. Uh, I heard the, the amount of positive comments that come out of that. I'm, I don't know how much hard work and how much time you put in, but I just wanted to tell you thank you. That that, I thought that that, I've been to a lot of state tournaments and I thought that that was as first class a, as I've seen. And uh, you know, we are very proud and honored to have this facility. But the things I heard from the people that came in from out of town that had no idea, you should be commended by.
God, John did a great job. He, he took that, took the bull with the horns on that, ran with it in the whole process and, and uh, um, he did, he did a wonderful job with it, and it was a great opportunity to show our, show our school district off.
Yes, I, I was very proud, very proud to say I'm, I'm a farming guy and, and, and I, I wanna thank you, I wanna thank you for that, John. It's a great job. And I hate it that my girls didn't get to play in the state championship, 'cause I think they were the best team.
Yep, I do too.
I'm also, uh, very honored and happy to, that we can call them state champs, you know, so they had a great season.
I, I would, I, I would tell you, John, did a great job of doing that, organized every bit of it from the, from going to Little Rock to lay the initial plane to have it, to, uh, being here every night to work it. It also wouldn't have been able to work without other people who, who, uh, came in when John said, "I need help," and one of them's sitting right over here, Ms. Pickerton, uh, in the hospitality room in here, was here every day and every night feeding, I don't know, hundreds of people every night and, uh, uh, we are, we are lucky to be here. We're lucky to have the people that we have to work with and, uh, when, uh, when an opportunity came where they could shine, they, they certainly did, both of them. They made the best of it, they showed our, showed our school and our community off and, and our district and our community and couldn't be prouder of both of them for all the work that.
I just wanna say thank you, man, I appreciate it.
Other than, happy birthday, Mr. Warren, should we, should we send her a, a, a balloon? Yeah, that's what, that truly closed me down for a second. Oh, happy birthday.
Thanks, it's good to hear.
Yes, sir. I have nothing else.
Alright, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you, virtual.
So we are here? Well?